All right, with the hour being after seven, I have a quorum present. We'll open the meeting. First item is, we have two sets of meeting notes, February sixth. I'll do February sixth first, because it's supposed to... Were there some corrections last time that we made, or whatever?
I had put a hold on. I'm good.
You're okay?
I'm fine, yeah. I just wanted more time to look them over.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve February sixth.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, February twentieth, anybody issues?
No.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second from Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. A and R. Well, we are away from Boyd, and that's an A and R.
I'm sorry, what do you want? Sorry, can I see?
A and R.
Don't tell us, you should be prepared. Wait, one of my kids?
Excuse me?
Yeah, there we go. All right, so we have an A and R for... Of Cedar. Houses. Don't unfill. All right. And this is done by... Oh, well, I'm not sure. Ooh. And done by... This guy's surveyor.
Want the rundown, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, you're doing it?
Yeah.
I am.
I don't see...
It's my surveyor.
My... You have your own surveyor?
Of course.
Okay. Let's say this is... Whatever. All right, this is yours, Dan? Okay, go ahead.
So Nineteenth Cedar Street, um, it's in the rural zone. They have extra land, so we're splitting it into lot thirty-seven, lot thirty-eight. They're both called lots because it's land court. Land court calls everything a lot. Lot thirty-eight is noted as not being a buildable lot. Lot thirty-seven is left with more than the required forty thousand square feet, and it has the two hundred feet of frontage. Nothing is changing there. Meets all the setbacks for structures.
Okay, is this in the resource?
No, just like the back. Fifteen feet of it is in the W R P O D, but none of the structures are in the W R P O D.
Oh, that's mentioned. Okay. An issue? No? Okay. All right, so they're just giving that back land. All right, everybody have any issues with it?
No.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to endorse.
Second.
We have a bunch of seconds, all in favor? Aye. Go ahead, start, guys. You got the Mylar.
Okay.
As soon as... Well, it has to be a Mylar for land court, all right?
For everybody. It doesn't have to be a land...
Oh, no, no, okay.
All right, Steve.
How you doing?
Good.
Is this the conservation meeting tonight?
No, planning board.
Oh, I thought the conservation was today.
Well, it's... But you might want to hang around here.
Just because he sat through our last meeting.
Who?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be continued again.
Again?
Um, I believe it's going to be...
Did you give an extension?
April third, I did.
Okay.
I just don't want you to sit through the whole meeting. April third at seven fifteen. He hasn't heard from one of, like, I think it was Spire.
I think if we gotta sit here, you should sit here. No?
If it was me, if I was sitting there, it would be very quick. Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right. All right, we'll jump right into it. Seven oh five Boyd Estates. Okay. We have some of the town engineer, Kyle. He did his thing. Original bond was two hundred and eleven grand, thereabouts. Value remaining in the sixth was fourteen. Multiple release is the same amount, fourteen, five, four, six, with a balance of zero. Correct, Kyle?
As far as I know. That's why I made sure whatever it is, it's all released, but that's what I understand.
So we have him all, this all set. And now we have a residence hearing. We'll have a planning board whole residence hearing, six, uh, seven oh five, March sixth, main meeting room for the final bond release of Boyd Estates subdivision. So this went to the residents, and are there any residents? Nope.
I'll have because of this.
Yeah.
We hate to say anything nice.
I just said yeah, didn't I? All right, so nobody have any issues from the public? Kyle, you're all set?
I am.
Let's go. John, you have anything?
Uh, no.
Phil?
No.
Katie?
No.
All right. I'll make a motion to release the bond.
Second.
Second from Phil.
That's the fourteen thousand figure?
Yeah, it's at zero. So it's now released.
Proceed with the street acceptance process?
Yeah, and to proceed with street acceptance, so, all right. It's too late for this spring, right?
No, it's on.
What?
It's on the mark.
How'd it get on?
We put it on.
Oh, this is yours?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's what I said, no.
Well, no, remember, we discussed that. There was an email back in November.
Why haven't we said no?
No, I'm all right.
Yeah, well, I could be...
There's four of them on there, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Can you do a second?
Give me a second, Kate.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. There you go. All right, and we're at seven ten point yet. Concom, they wanted comments?
That was the one we did when I spoke about...
Yeah. I've never really got them before.
No, but I did ask for a paper copy. It's this one, let's see it.
What they want, they want us to comment?
If you want to, they sent it to everybody, so it's not...
Okay, this is the one that we'll... All right, it's Nine Pinnacle Drive, and they're going to do fifteen single-family homes on there. So it'll be a site plan eventually in front of us, correct?
Which one is this, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Nine Pinnacle.
Yeah. I don't even know if I've seen that.
It came through Open Gov. They were looking, Concom was looking for comments.
Okay.
It's not a... It's not a site plan approval.
It's not a 50B, so it'll be under site plan approval. So we'll eventually see it. I mean, anybody want to say anything now?
We don't have enough to say anything.
No, we don't. It's other than it'll be in front of us, so just, we can just say that, Kate?
Yep.
It'll be in front of us at some point.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will say that I have seen it, um, and that we've looked at the drainage pretty well, or the Concom.
Okay.
I'm getting my exercise.
Unless it's something different.
Now, here we are. Seven ten Wall Street Development, Warwick Road. Do you have a folder?
Jack, I wasn't sure. I didn't give without get. Did you want it to work?
You got a decision?
I'm sorry?
For a decision tonight?
I didn't do the decision.
We'll vote that.
This was basically what you and I talked about.
Yeah, we're gonna vote it. That'll be the special condition.
You want them to be in, okay.
Well, we can vote it, and you can do it after. Um, because we only have the two, correct? Specials, everything else is the same.
Yes.
Right? Yep. So we'll do those. All right, notice here, by giving a public hearing on Wall Street Development on March sixth at seven ten, the application is for two-lot subdivision with waivers located off of Warwick Road. Said property is shown as assessed as map fifty-six, parcel eighty-nine, and ninety, zoning district rule, rural, it's a two-lot prepared by GL and Engineering, latest date, dated August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Okay. With the hearing being opened, this is a remand from the court. They're a whole lot. Uh, we do have Kyle's comments, and all the other comments that were done back in... What, I wonder if he was back in June? The twenty-four is still germane, so I believe you're... You understand what we're doing? Mr. Kelly, no?
Excuse me?
Do you know what's going on? I know you're here for this, right?
Well, this has been going on for so long, uh...
We lost, okay. But the court said, there was a better agreement, and the court says remand. The court says, we approved it. He appealed it. Then it got bounced, it went up to the court, and they said, work it out. So we had to redo the hearing, but we're going back on what was presented back in June of twenty twenty-four. Nothing has changed, the plan or anything, okay? The only condition that would be tonight would be, it said, one of the conditions would be that any issues, or whatever, by the, uh, Kyle would have to be addressed and put on the final plan before he gives it to us to get it signed off at some point. So I have Kyle's, the police fire, everyone else is chiming in on. Kyle had gone, he had comments, and he, now he's put them in writing so that these will actually go on at some point in the future. But we're gonna vote the comments. I know it's probably not making sense to you.
Well, should I get up to the mic?
Sure. Just while you're getting up there, just so you understand. Everything on the town side, we're not dealing with. That has nothing to do with us. Your side.
My concern with the project was that... Okay, I live on Seven Wall Street, which is the corner lot, Warwick Road and Wall Street.
Yep.
So for this project, you know, obviously, the elevation of the road is gonna change, and that's gonna have an impact on that side of my property. And, uh, I was against having a wall built on that side of my property because it would have a negative impact on me accessing that side of my property. I did have a number of conversations with Lou over the years, and actually, the last one at my property was probably late summer, early fall of two thousand and twenty-three, where, uh, in lieu of the wall, I was willing to work with him, uh, to taper onto my property as long as he would do some, there's some trees that would need to be removed. And, uh, we didn't come to a formal agreement, but we were, we're pretty much on the same page. And then I believe the proposal was turned down.
They didn't turn it down. We approved it.
That was back in twenty...
Yeah, it was back in June twenty-four.
No, I'm talking twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three, yeah.
Uh, then in the spring of twenty-four, which is last year, I did receive, uh, you know, a certified letter in the mail uh, saying that it now was being reopened. And, uh, I remember I met Lou out in the lobby, and, uh, he asked me if I got the letter about grading onto his property that he had sent me. I said I had, but we had discussed a lot more than just looming seat. And that was the last time we ever had any conversation. So that's, those are my points of concern.
Okay. Now, as I explained before, we have nothing to do with you and that side. It's between you, the town, and Wall Street. He doesn't come in front of us. This is a town road. The selectmen voted to allow him to do all this. So it's really a three-way thing, you, him, and the selectmen.
All right, I sent a letter to the selectmen. I never heard from him.
Okay. So if, if he's doing work on your property, my opinion is you'd have to be part of the application. Or you would have to sign off and give an easement or something to that effect. But you cannot do work on someone else's property without either being part of the application or you've given him the right to it, a written, signed agreement. So... Kyle's spearheading that for the town, for the review of the plans and everything.
I could work with Kyle on this?
Yeah, yeah. Kyle's the guy. Us, we're just...
Yeah, I'm open to that.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I don't know... How far along in that plan, Kyle? Just chugging along now?
Yep.
Okay.
Just through you, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Kelly, this, tonight is all dealing with on the other side of the wall or the river, so to speak. In other words, the cul-de-sac portion and whatnot, and not the part that's actually in the existing Wall Street.
All right.
Um, that, um, we're going to have to work on the issues that you just discussed, but we'll do it under the approval of the work that will be approved in the public way.
All right. I'll talk to you.
You will.
Okay.
Right, and Sue?
All right. You'll contact me?
I can.
I can contact you.
If I don't blow up a phone between now and then, yes, I will.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Been pretty busy. I was off a couple of weeks in February, so I'm a little behind.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, public? If not, you wanna read your comments, Kyle?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I noted that the planning board, um, the applicant had dropped off um, the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three plans. Those are the plans that were on the table when I did my last review. Um, so I brought forth the comments that were pertinent to the subdivision, to the part that's underneath, that's under your, um, review, and the memo is dated today. Um, those are pretty simple comments, provide a north arrow on the locust plan. Um, the next one actually deals with what we were just discussing with Mr. Kelly. If an agreement is made with the abutment at Seven Wall Street, show temper permanent easement for grading. That's on the layout plan. That is not shown on that plan, um, or subsequent plans for that matter. Uh, show proposed street light, that's done. And then the fifth comment is, uh, provide a detail for the light poles and bases. Uh, actually, that is not done on, on the August twenty-fifth plan. Uh, none of these are done on the August twenty-fifth plan, and the sixth one was about the stormwater. Uh, it didn't comply with the subdivision rules and regulations at the time. Um, I then brought forth a couple of new comments, um, and said, uh, this, this is very much detail. Uh, the town clerk's certification needs to be above the planning board block, signature block, per discussions with the town clerk. She's particular about how that stuff is ordered, um, and it makes sense because it's sequential. Uh, and then I asked, and this is a new note, that I think on sheets four and five, there'd be a note added to the existing note saying that the work shown in the existing Wall Street, whether, whether it's the built part of Wall Street or the unbuilt part, is not approved on this plan. So that there's no confusion that this plan, in some left-handed way or otherwise, approved that work that will be done afterwards, um, with us through the town. So those are the comments that we have on there. At the end of the memo, I did note that we have subsequent plans are the ones that were dropped off, two more revisions in two thousand and twenty-four. And all of those comments, except number three regarding Mr. Kelly's, uh, the work on Mr. Kelly's land have been resolved in, in the later plans, which Mr. Petrosi did file with me. We also looked at him for the Conservation Commission after the planning board rendered its decision in June of twenty-four. Confusing, but that's the way it is.
Yep. All right. Uh, Kate, do you have anything to add, if it's going on or not?
I do not.
Phil?
So we also be adding the special conditions?
Yeah, we got, yeah, another special, yeah.
Okay, that'll come.
Not, not number two.
Sorry, no, I'm good with these.
No, well, we got, number two's gonna be changed, though. John, do you have any questions, comments?
Um...
I need that one.
No, I'm not.
So if you're all set, I got nothing.
You can go one way down.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
The second, all in favor? Aye. Both abstain. All right, we have... Hold on a minute, what?
Which second of that's mine?
Yeah. All right. Special condition one is what we just talked about. The applicant shall revise to incorporate all the town engineer's comments and submit, and I want to put, whoops. We put the date, too, Kate, of Kyle's comments.
The date of Kyle's comments?
Yeah, which is today, yeah.
Does Kyle want a copy?
Uh...
Actually, he did not have a copyright at this time, but that's good.
Of three, six, twenty-five. And submit the town engineer prior to seeking endorsement, acceptance of the covenant. In addition, the town engineer's comments, said plan show, meet the plan board's rules and regular subdivision control prior to seeking said endorsement, acceptance of the covenants, as no additional waivers are sought by the applicant. Okay. Special condition number two, because you, because we don't have a connection, so if you go to Mass General Law, chapter forty-one, subchapter eighty-one, it requires the subdivision provide a safe and convenient travel. They don't have that now to the adjacent. And that the, and also says eighty-one else, is that the present frontage of Warwick lacks a certificate from this town clerk that's used the public way. And so what it is, is the applicant approval is not deemed granted until the applicant has provided to the road commissioner, select board, with the required surety guarantee to secure the completion and construction on Porsche, unconstructed portion of Warwick Road. So all that says is, when he gets his deal with the selectman, they say everything's okay, he can come back to us, could be the next night. And we can do that standard acceptance, release of Form F, and then he can get a bond at any time after that. If that makes sense?
May I speak?
Well, the hearing's closed, so it doesn't matter.
I don't know. Can you speak informally?
You're gonna, okay, you're gonna peel this one, right?
No, no. I think, I think we just had a problem with the wording of those conditions. And I, and so all I'm gonna say is that, uh, a condition of your approval would be that we go and we get selectmen...
That's what it says here.
But I think the sequencing of when, the approval is the approval, subject to those conditions.
Yeah, the approval is, will be, is not deemed granted until the applicant has received it from the selectman.
So let me just ask a question. So let's, we get, we get the approval, we want to have the Mylar signed. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we submit the Mylar, as they get signed and they get recorded, but the subdivision, you can't have an approval that's like out in the future.
I can't have an approval where we don't have an access to Warwick Road.
But that's a condition of the approval.
Well, it's not a condition. Very clearly in Mass General Law is that you have to have it. So all you gotta do is go post your bond after you guys agree what you're gonna do with the road, and then you come back the next night, and we sign off, and you're good to go.
So let's say, this has been going wrong for, but let's say this drags on with the select board for another six months, and the Mylar still haven't signed. Are you saying that the subdivision hasn't been approved yet?
It'll be deemed approved once this happens. If this, this never happens, you don't have a subdivision. Say if you walk away tomorrow, you won't have a subdivision.
You are right, you're ripe for that. But I'm just saying, we should be able to, let's say I have a closing. We should be able to have a closing.
A closing on what, selling lots?
No, no, no. We should be able, have a closing, record the plans, and have the Mylar in a form.
But that would mean the plan now is approved down there.
Exactly.
But you don't have...
But can't be built.
No. You've now, you can run around with a plan. We can't approve any plan until you have access to the frontage public way. That's all we're saying. And this will tick off. We did this for Olmstead and Whitman. Once they bonded that, we did this for Viano up at Burke. Once that bond was set, we're all set. Here goes, we'll sign, have a nice day. That's all.
Okay, I'll have the attorney look at it again, but...
Ah, you can.
Usually, usually, it's a condition of approval, like the first time, the first time you said, oh, you don't have authorization from the select board to connect into Warwick Road. So we got that, and that satisfied that condition that was in the original reason for denial. So now you're adding another step to that to actually have the physical permit from the selectman.
I want you to wait home, read on your phone, eighty-one M and eighty-one L, but we can't do it because you can't, you agree, you can't get there now. That's all. Once you, you hand the selectmen their bond, or however you do it, or the road's all, however you do it, boom, this becomes approved. This becomes ready to rock and roll.
Right, we're just, I, I, I guess we're, you could put that in any condition where the plan was required to comply with, and it still couldn't be built. So let's say, let's say the, you need a connection to water, municipal water, or municipal store.
Okay, I'll put it another way. I know we're gonna argue about this, but we're gonna break it short. Say there was nothing across there, there wasn't even a town road. Do you believe we could approve this?
You can approve anything with conditions, yes. You have the right.
No, you can't.
You have the right.
So I can approve an island that doesn't connect to anything, and that's fine. It says right there, you need public safety, public convenient, and transportation.
But I think the permit that we submitted, and this is going through with the judge and town council, I think that we've submitted sufficient evidence to substantiate that we have access. So the first time...
We're not denying you have access at some point, but there's nothing to protect the public.
But that's what your condition is for. That's what the condition is for. So we have to be allowed to record the plan, get endorsement of the plan, and record the plan. That's what triggers our appeal period, and I'll, and anybody, any abutment's appeal period.
And so, once you get it, then it's deemed approved, you got twenty days, but you can still come into us. We, we signed the plan anyway, right? Oh, the twenty days, so we're not, you can't do anything.
Kyle's process is not twenty days. It's not a twenty-day process.
What do you mean?
Kyle's process is a significant...
What process is that, I don't know?
To get the street opening permit, or with the things that you're suggesting.
Yeah, but that isn't triggered by any of this. You could start that tomorrow, correct, Mr.?
He could start it tomorrow.
Yeah, you get street opening, you could get, uh, whatever you want to do for the section bond.
What exactly are you asking us to do, then?
All right, just wait until you and the selectmen agree, and however it's done, whether the road's done, or you give them what the surety that they're saying that's guaranteeing that road will be built and connected to your two lots, that's all.
I, I don't think you're on the same page with your town council.
My town council wasn't on the same page, he didn't understand.
But that's gonna, it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna go back to the judge. The judge will make the decision.
Oh, all right, good, I'll go see the judge.
But you're making... It's a very simple thing.
I know it's simple, okay.
Why are you making it so complicated?
I'm not making it complicated, Mr. Petrosi. You have, I gotta go by subdivision control, eighty-one L, eighty-one M. Just go look at that and see. We can't approve anything without, okay?
You have the discretion under your regulations. You have the discretion under your regulations. So this is actually, you know, this is obviously a unique situation.
Well, not, not really, because I go back to, you must know the Rentschuck decision they had. Remember that one?
I don't want to get into the decision.
Well, he, he said he had 95 for his, his frontage, and he could go there, and they said, no, you can't. They struck it down. It's the same thing. He had nowhere else to go.
That was related to adequate access.
Well, this is the same thing. You don't have access, but we, we let you talk informally. All right. So anybody have a, all right, we'll do a condition one. Anybody have any issues? Anybody want to make a motion? Want to make a motion for condition one? All those in favor?
Are we doing them separately?
Yeah. Yeah. All those in favor of one?
I, your second.
Yeah, your second, okay.
Second.
Phil, okay, I. Condition two.
Second. So this seems a little different than what we had talked about, Phil.
Yeah, but he didn't, no, this was something, this, that was written by his attorney, not by our guy. If you go back, you look at it, that came from whatever attorney it was. It wasn't written by Tom Lane. But if you go and read, Phil, it's very clear in those two subsections that we got to make sure that they can get there, and they can't right now. And this isn't holding up, we're not doing anything, because he can't do anything to that road. He can't even get across there, if you think about it. You know, he's got to do the wetlands crossing first, so he couldn't even get there without doing some building. That's all it's saying, is once you get that, then you're all set, you have a way out. We did it at Atlantic Court, up at, what do you call it, over here, Barrett Estates. Toll Brothers owned a here, Viano owned the last piece. That wasn't bonded. So he could not do anything, and that just sat there without the same thing. Didn't get approved. Once they put the bond there, that's guaranteeing this road's there, so that means now Viano had, could tie into it, just like at Olmstead. You weren't here for that, right?
No.
You're familiar with Olmstead and Whitman, Holmes?
Um, vaguely.
All right, off of NOS, off of Fisher.
Okay.
Whitman's like this. So what happened is, this is Olmstead, this was him, but Olmstead hadn't bonded this. They were on Fisher, they had bonded it. So if they didn't bond it, this guy could not get through his to get out there. It's the same thing. They couldn't do any, we didn't approve that until they bonded it, which was like the next week. So that's all. It's just saying, all, all we got to do here is, once he gets a bond for this, we know it's going to get built. That's all. We're just protecting the town, or anything, so.
And is, is that a long process, Kyle? Do you have to approve the, the road design first, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's months away, months.
Yeah. Do you come up with the bad amount?
Well, the design has to be squared away. You can't set exactly what we're going to do from that. You develop an estimate, there's a bond estimate.
But doesn't this go back to more than a year? If the selectmen said, fine, go for it?
Does it?
For the, the town piece?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's been sitting for a year doing nothing.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not like we're holding this up, that's all.
Correct.
So if you were right on the ball, you'd already have your piece done, approved by the selectman, would have had the surety here, we could have said, yay, we're done. That hasn't happened, so.
Yeah, it may not be as long as, as you think, but we'll see. We've got to iron out some details.
Everything, so you understand, Phil, everything on hit this side is Kyle's in control. There's no hearings, there's no nothing on that. It's, he's, you're the agent for the selectman on this.
I am.
Yeah.
I just look at this, it's been going on a long time, and it seems, you know, with the, with litigation and...
Yeah, but like I said, is he's had, he could have had this all done by now. That's all.
Well, I don't want to speak for Wall Street, but you know, while the other, this process is going on, I don't know that they pushed trying to resolve the work in the public way. And, you know, we're getting around, we're sorting through things, there's a lot of things going on. We've got to get together, and we've got to iron out what's going to happen. That's one of the bigger items, and said, you know, what's going to happen? There's some grading on Mr. Kelly's lot, and what, and how is that going to be worked out? And that has an impact on the design. If it doesn't get worked out, there's going to need to be a wall. Mr. Kelly doesn't want a wall. I don't think Mr. Petrosi does either. So if those can come to terms, then the rest of the things will come together fairly easily. Discussion about whether the sidewalk's going to be there and things like that. But Conservation basically approved what you've seen on that plan, if I'm not mistaken.
Can, can give one for us, one for the other side?
I'm not quite sure. I actually have to ask Wall Street to comment on that, but I'm, I'm not sure how this was separated. I only saw one.
It wasn't separate.
That was not.
Everything was, everything had been approved, lots had been approved, the other ones had been approved, the rest of the construction had been approved, everything.
Well, for procedure, that wouldn't have done it like that, because you have the applicant as the town on this side, and him as the applicant on that side, and you got one place, it's...
We're just talking about changing like three words for what you suggested.
Well, I'm not saying, but...
I, I don't, the Conservation does their thing.
Well, Kyle, I'll put this one out, I'll ask you. Say if somebody, something happens to impact the wetlands, southern town side, does this landers come down and yell at you because you're the town?
Probably.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Or the agent. I mean, if, if, you know, Mr. Petrosi's going to build it, it'll be his contractor, so.
So, just so I understand, you know, we've already presented evidence to the board that the select board have granted us a access, the ability to construct Warwick Road. We have that. You've already had that in your file for a couple of years. We also now have an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, giving us authorization to construct the road that's shown on the plan.
Right.
So whether or not we wanted to start building that road next week or next year shouldn't be a, shouldn't be a condition of this approval. It's just that your approval should be subject to us constructing the roadway as shown on the plan.
Can't, we keep going back, whether you, whether it gets built or not, that's the thing. But right now, we have a plan that does not have access to public way. Meaning that you could drive on.
That's why you're making, that's why you're making the condition.
Well, that's what it says in the subdivision control.
Your own, no, but your own regulations allow you the discretion. I forget the section of the, even in your own regulations give you the discretion to do that.
All right, so you want me to be, to give you, go for it?
No.
Absolutely not. We want to make sure this thing gets done properly and doesn't get lost.
That's talking about endorsing the plan and making a condition that no lots are, no lots can be sold or built upon until the access has been constructed.
But we can't, based upon the Mass General Laws, it says you have to have access on a public way that you can drive on. We don't have that. If we had that, we wouldn't be talking about this.
But your regulations has a...
So you want us just to just grant you a waiver?
No, 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 I'm not asking for a waiver. It's in your regulations that, that deals with this kind of situation.
This is not, this is a simple situation.
You're making it complicated.
No, I didn't. You know, Viano was able to do it, and so was Olmstead, so I mean, what, it was, that was all easy.
I'm not my Viano, I think I'm a little bit higher than Viano. That's the way I look at it. But in any case, I, you're really making this complicated. From my understanding, between talking with town council and our council, this was just supposed to be a formality, and you've made it into a more, they're going to have to go back to the judge now, and the judge's not going to be happy, let me tell you.
Why wouldn't the judge be happy?
Let, let town council, you know, inform you.
So you, you've been talking to town council? Gee, I wish we could talk to him as much as you do.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that it's a very simple request. You're making it complicated, that it shouldn't be complicated. It's a condition that you would put it on any other...
Then, okay, let me ask you, I don't want to beat the dead horse. Why don't you want to do what has been laid out? What is, what is the sole reason stopping you from doing it the way it's laid?
Timing, timing, first of all. Secondly, contractually, you know, from our perspective, in order to, to proceed with a closing and pass papers on the, on the property that consists of the subdivision, we need a signed Mylar. We need a Mylar endorsed by the planning board, and we are not going to have the ability to get an endorsed plan to record, to complete a closing.
So this has to do with the deals you made with the people?
Absolutely. Well, in any closing.
Okay.
Any, any, any kind of development plan.
Okay, so we should grant you that because you want to make the closing, so we should be part of it, but we get no, the town gets no benefit out of it.
Don't, don't put words in my mouth. I mean, it's a simple, you're making it a condition that we get the curb cut or the street opening permit, or post the bond before we get endorsement. All I'm saying is, let's get the endorsement out of the way, and then make it a condition that we get the permit. It's a very simple process.
Has to take care of before the car.
Yeah, okay. So he's given us all outside, but it doesn't matter, we've already closed the hearing, so.
So Jack, on the vote for each of the...
Yeah, that was 4-0.
Is that a, for the special conditions, or is that a...
Yeah, first one.
Does that require a four-person vote, or a three?
No, three, majority.
Majority, yeah.
Now, for the second one, did we have a motion out there on that?
I thought so. Right to... Kyle's. There was a motion, the second by John.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, okay, and we had discussion. All those in favor of condition number two as written here?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. What are you going to do, Phil?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. It's, yeah, it's either, it doesn't matter one...
Doesn't matter one.
Which way, yeah.
I, I just feel that, I feel we should try to avoid litigation when we can, doesn't, you know, so.
Anyway, it's a...
A lot of that's up to the applicant. We're doing what feels right and by the laws. If he wants to, he has his right to do what he wants to do also, but...
Yeah, and given, given he said he had this for a couple, he could have had this already approved, they could already have it built by now.
And to be clear, now that I, I want to make sure we do the project right, but I don't know if it's going to make a lot of difference either the way you do this, that that's, that's what I'm, what I think.
Well, what I get concerned, Phil, this could get lost in the town hall, Colery tires, and this and this, and everybody goes, oh.
Kyle, retire, retire?
He could retire, yeah.
So as long as, I feel as long as we're protecting the town...
Oh, he could be retired.
Yeah. So I feel as long as we're protecting the town.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing, yeah.
And I feel, yeah.
So it doesn't get, things can get lost and things change.
Yeah.
Did I say you're retired, or you're getting retired?
He's getting tired.
Sure as heck not retired. Tired, yes. But it's about 10 minutes of five. Overrated. Let the record show, Mr. Chairman, it's four weeks.
Because he negotiated a bad deal and they came back.
That's correct.
Let the record show what he said. Four weeks.
Now we have to vote on that. We just voted on the special conditions.
I thought we voted, no, we voted, did we vote approval? Okay, I thought we voted approval, right?
I'm sorry?
We did vote approval.
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision with those two special conditions.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that's it.
I was mad.
Dun, dun, dun.
Okay.
Go on.
Motion to adjourn. No, 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 wait a minute.
No, we have one more thing.
You're all set with the final bond release?
Yeah.
Okay, then, all right, that's all it was.
And Heidi.
Oh, we, I'm sorry.
Oh, Heidi, yes, thank you, Phil.
Good, Phil. I'll make a motion to grant the applicant time through August, I mean, August, April 30th, 2025. Do you have a second?
Second.
My second, Kate this time, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And since we've opened the hearing, and we're going to continue without testimony, and if anybody looking out there, I know it's never on anymore, but we're going to be on April 3rd at what time?
7:15.
Okay, and we'll continue this to April 3rd at 7:15. All right? All right. That's it.
Now I can adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Done.